Okay, we'll come back into session and back into order after very nice volunteer ceremony. Certainly thank all of our volunteers and all the folks who helped recognize them today. And I want to just give a special shout out to my staff and those that assisted my staffing, doing those abundance of proclamations. So, thanks once again to everyone who helped put it together. All right, if anyone will call or reestablish your quorum, please.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay.
Item 42 is a request for review of license suspension, Tobacco Retailer License, TRB.
All right, we have our presenters. We're going to introduce this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Galvart. I'm counsel for appellate.
Can't hear you.
How about this?
Hi, Melissa. There you go. Very good.
I don't usually speak with a microphone, but I was also thinking I don't usually cry before I argue appeals, but the meeting today was so nice. It was such a pleasure to be at it. I feel really lucky that I got to see it.
That's great.
Do you cry after you argue?
No, no. Sometimes only tears of victory if it's called for.
Oh, wow.
Thank you for having me today.
You bet.
So, I'm here to talk about a suspension of a tobacco retailer license.
I'm sorry, are you with the county or are you with the appellate?
I'm counsel for appellate.
So, if I could ask you to pause for a second and I could ask county counsel, at what point do I, do we decide that this will be conducted by argument only? Is it at this point?
I think that would be, if you don't mind.
Somebody needed to introduce this item. So, let's just, Melissa, could you just take time out just for a second, stand by. So, let's do this so that we got the context here. It was just like kind of, you know, put Melissa out here to start making the arguments. We need to have a presentation summary and then what this board has under consideration and then what action we can take to, as it relates to conducting this hearing. So, we need to make sure in the future we have that, please.
Thank you. We'll hit reset and Diana Reece.
Okay.
Deputy County Counsel.
All right, thanks.
Diana Reece, County Counsel representing the county. On this matter, Colonial Energy had a, their tobacco license suspended, they, 30-day suspension. They appealed the suspension. There was a hearing on the suspension in January of this year. The hearing officer's decision upheld the suspension and the business, the licensee, appealed the matter to the board. And I prepared the March 24, 2017 memo to the board summarizing the issues. And the choices that the board has with regard to this matter is that the review of the hearing officer's decision may be by argument only. And that's what we are recommending that you uphold. It also may be that you may have a de novo review of the evidence. And there's a, there's a third one, and I forget what the third one is, but anyway.
Admit supplementary evidence with respect to challenges of particular findings.
Thank you. I apologize. Thank you. Yes. Anyway, the recommendation of county counsel representing the county is that the review be conducted by argument only and that the hearing officer's decision be upheld.
Okay, so it is at this point that we would make a mo, I would make a motion to conduct by argument only?
Yes.
So, I would move that the review be conducted by argument only?
Okay.
All right, just move a second and then we're going to conduct the review by argument
only.
Vote.
And please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Now, I guess we do have the written background. And Diana, this has been shared with counsel for the appellate?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, so let me ask, while you're there, anything else you need to put into the record and/or add, and then we'll call Melissa forward when you're done.
Basically, the county's position is, is that the violation of Penal Code Section 308A was proven by the guilty plea and conviction of the store clerk. So, there's, it's conclusively proven that Penal Code Section 308A was violated in the sale of tobacco product to a person under the age of 18, which is not the current law, but it was the law at the time the operation occurred, which was in April of last year. And...
I'm sorry, could I just pause and ask county counsel? I thought after we made the decision to hear this by argument only that the appellate spoke next. Am I correct or incorrect?
I think Ms. Reece is just giving you a summary of...
She's still summarizing?
Right. I'm more, I mean, if I, if I have a, the appellate has a burden of proof at this point, and I'm fine with her going first and I'm...
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any summary, so I wasn't trying to get an order here. I just wanted to give, you know, again, we had the written statement and I think just kind of framing it is helpful. We all have that. Maybe not everybody in the audience does. So, okay, unless there's anything else, Diana, then I'm going to call Melissa forward and, okay, thanks, stand by. Okay, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little short. Is this good?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
You can lower the podium if you'd like there, just to hear it.
He's fine.
I'm not that short.
Okay.
Again, thank you. My name's Melissa Galvart. I'm here for appellate Colonial Energy. And I am here to request that this board reverse the county's decision to impose discipline on Colonial Energy's tobacco retailer license. Sacramento's tobacco retailer ordinance, and I understand that it was amended as recently as today, the ordinance that was in effect throughout these proceedings is so riddled with unconstitutional infirmities that it wouldn't withstand a moment of judicial scrutiny. When the government seeks to infringe on a property right such as a tobacco retailer license, a vested right, there has to be procedural safeguards. And the greater the government infringement, the greater the procedural safeguards have to be. And here, the tobacco, Sacramento's tobacco ordinance, it provides for a pretty harsh penalty. It says that the county shall, you know, without discretion, suspend a license for one month upon the first violation. So, that's what we have on one side of the spectrum, but on the other end, where there should be the procedure and the process and the safeguards, there's really nothing. The amendment to the ordinance that this board voted on today, I did review the documents and even the county counsel in those documents acknowledged that the way that the ordinance was drafted caused confusion and led to unforeseen impacts. I think those are just commonplace terms for legalese of vague and ambiguous. And I can tell you, based on experience of, you know, I've been dealing with this matter for about a year now with county counsel, it is extremely confusing. At each step of the ordinance, at each step of the discipline, you know, it's basically felt like grappling in the dark. And I'm an administrative attorney. I mostly do alcohol, Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control hearings. And in comparison even to that, I mean, licensees and even the county employees who are tasked with enforcing this ordinance are left in the dark. It's very hard and it felt to me like as we went, everything was being improvised. And even at that, it was a tricky improvisation.
As long as you pause right there, are you suggesting that the code is not clear that minors should not be sold cigarettes?
No, that part is clear.
Okay.
The part that's not clear, and there are so many parts, I think, to me that aren't clear, mostly have to do with the hearing process itself. The, what the licensee is actually entitled to, you know, in terms of notice, in terms of an opportunity to be heard, the way that the ordinance functions right now is that the sheriff conducts operations and then the tax, the tax and license collector issues findings and sends a notice of suspension to the licensee. So, the first notice that a licensee gets is a document saying, "Your license has been suspended." That's the first time that they know that an operation has been conducted, that operations are conducted of anything in general.
Can I interrupt for a sec?
Sure.
Through the chair. But isn't it a fact that if there is, in the course of an operation where, in this case, an underage decoy was used to attempt to acquire tobacco products, the actual individual employed by the owner of the store is cited on the spot, are they not?
Yes, they are.
So, that, I mean, that...
Not a surprise.
Right, right. So, there's, there's, there is...
A citation.
An immediate...
A citation.
Yeah, right.
A citation says on the face of the document, "This is not an admission of guilt." A citation is based on probable cause.
I understand that, but that is going to be the first notice for the owner, I would suspect, that something happened, right?
I'm with you there.
I agree with you. There's, there's, everyone presumed innocent until proven guilty.
Absolutely, right. So, I'm with you there. The licensee might find out from their employee based on, you know, lots of different variables. You know, for a client like CVS or 7-Eleven who have corporate headquarters in Rhode Island or Connecticut, it certainly is trickier to rely solely on whether the employee is going to be completely forthright with their employer. But that's really another issue. So, the, and I had an opportunity to cross-examine the tax and license collector at the administrative hearing that we had in this matter. And he testified that the suspensions, the notices of suspensions are issued based on just the citation alone. So, before there's been an adjudication of guilt in the criminal courts, there's a finding made by a non-attorney that of law has been violated without any oppor-
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Okay, well, come back into session and back into order after a very nice volunteer
ceremony. Certainly thank all of our volunteers and all the folks who helped recognize them today. And I want to just give a special shout out to my, my staff and those that assisted my staffing, doing those abundance of proclamations. So, thanks once again to everyone who helped put it together. All right, if anyone will call or reestablish your quorum, please.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay.
Item 42 is a request for review of license suspension, Tobacco Retailer License, TRB.
All right, we have our presenters. We're going to introduce this item.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Melissa Galvart. I'm counsel for appellate.
Can't hear you.
How about this?
Hi, Melissa. There you go. Very good.
I don't usually speak with a microphone, but I was also thinking I don't usually cry before I argue appeals, but the meeting today was, was so nice. It was such a pleasure to be at it. I feel really lucky that I got to see it.
That's great.
Do you cry after you argue?
No, no. Sometimes only tears of victory if it's called for.
Oh, wow.
But thank you, thank you for having me today.
You bet.
So, I'm here to talk about a suspension of a tobacco retailer license.
I'm sorry, are you with the county or are you with the appellate?
I'm counsel for appellate. Colonial Energy.
So, if I could ask you to pause for a second and I could ask county counsel, at what point do I, do we decide that this will be conducted by argument only? Is it at this point?
I think that would be, if you don't mind.
Somebody needed to introduce this item. So, let's just, Melissa, could you just, take time out just for a second, stand by. So, let's do this so that we got the context here. It was just like kind of, you know, put Melissa out here to start making the arguments. We need to have a presentation summary and then what this board has under its consideration and then what action we can take to, as it relates to conducting this hearing. So, we need to make sure in the future we have that, please.
Thank you. We'll hit reset and Diana Reece.
Okay.
Deputy County Counsel.
All right, thanks.
Diana Reece, County Counsel representing the county. On this matter, Colonial Energy had a, their tobacco license suspended, they, 30-day suspension. They appealed the suspension. There was a hearing on the suspension in January of this year. The hearing officer's decision upheld the suspension and the, the business, the licensee appealed the matter to the board. And I prepared the March 24, 2017 memo to the board summarizing the issues. And the choices that the board has with regard to this matter is that the review of the hearing officer's decision may be by argument only. And that's what we are recommending that you uphold. It also may be that you may have a de novo review of the evidence. And there's a, there's a third one, and I forget what the third one is, but anyway, there are...
Admit supplementary evidence with respect to challenges of particular findings.
Thank you. I apologize. Thank you. Yes. Anyway, the, the recommendation of county counsel representing the county is that the review be conducted by argument only and that the hearing officer's decision be upheld.
Oh.
Okay, so it is at this point that we would make a mo, I would make a motion to conduct by argument only?
Yes.
So, I would move that the review be conducted by argument only?
Okay.
Second.
All right, just move a second and then we're going to conduct the review by argument only.
Vote.
And please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Now, I guess we do have the written background. And Diana, this has been shared with counsel for the appellate?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, so let me ask, while you're there, anything else you need to put into the record and/or add, and then we'll call Melissa forward when you're done.
Basically, the county's position is, is that the violation of Penal Code Section 308A was proven by the guilty plea and conviction of the store clerk. So, there's, it's conclusively proven that Penal Code Section 308A was violated in the sale of tobacco product to a person under the age of 18, which is not the current law, but it was the law at the time the operation occurred, which was in April of last year. And...
I'm sorry, could I just pause and ask county counsel? I thought after we made the decision to hear this by argument only that the appellate spoke next. Am I correct or incorrect?
I think Ms. Reece is just giving you a summary of...
She's still summarizing?
Right. I'm more, I mean, if I, if I have a, the appellate has a burden of proof at this point and I'm fine with her going first and I'm...
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any summary, so I wasn't trying to get an order here. I just wanted to give, you know, again, we had the written statement and I think just kind of framing it is helpful. We all have that. Maybe not everybody in the audience does. So, okay, unless there's anything else, Diana, then I'm going to call Melissa forward and, okay, thanks, stand by. Okay, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little short. Is this good?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
You can lower the podium if you'd like there, just to hear it.
He's fine.
I'm not that short.
Okay.
Again, thank you. My name's Melissa Galvart. I'm here for appellate, Colonial Energy. And I am here to request that this board reverse the county's decision to impose discipline on Colonial Energy's tobacco retailer license. Sacramento's tobacco retailer ordinance, and I understand that it was amended as recently as today, the ordinance that was in effect throughout these proceedings is, is so riddled with unconstitutional infirmities that it wouldn't withstand a moment of judicial scrutiny. When the government seeks to infringe on a property right such as a tobacco retailer license, a vested right, there has to be procedural safeguards. And the greater the government infringement, the greater the procedural safeguards have to be. And here, the tobacco, Sacramento's tobacco ordinance, it provides for a pretty harsh penalty. It says that the county shall, you know, without discretion, suspend a license for one month upon the first violation. So, that's what we have on one side of the spectrum, but on the other end, where there should be the procedure and the process and the safeguards, there's really nothing. The amendment to the ordinance that this board voted on today, I did review the documents and even the county counsel in those documents acknowledged that the way that the ordinance was drafted caused confusion and led to unforeseen impacts. I think those are just commonplace terms for legalese of vague and ambiguous. And, and I can tell you, based on experience of, you know, I've been dealing with this matter for about a year now with county counsel, it is extremely confusing. At each step of the ordinance, at each step of the discipline, you know, it's basically felt like grappling in the dark. And I'm an administrative attorney. I mostly do alcohol, Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control hearings. And in comparison even to that, I mean, licensees and even the county employees who are tasked with enforcing this ordinance are left in the dark. It's, it's very hard and it felt to me like as we went, everything was being improvised. And, and even at that, it was a tricky improvisation.
As long as you pause right there, are you suggesting that the code is not clear that minors should not be sold cigarettes?
No, that part is clear.
Okay.
The part that's not clear, and there are so many parts, I think, to me that aren't clear, mostly have to do with the hearing process itself. The, what, what the licensee is actually entitled to, you know, in terms of notice, in terms of an opportunity to be heard, the way that the ordinance functions right now is that the sheriff conducts operations and then the tax, the tax and license collector issues findings and sends a notice of suspension to, to the licensee. So, the first notice that a licensee gets is a document saying, "Your license has been suspended." That's the first time that they know that an operation has been conducted, that operations are conducted of anything in, in general.
Can I interrupt for a sec?
Sure.
Through the chair. But isn't it a fact that if there is, in the course of an operation where, in this case, an underage decoy was used to attempt to acquire tobacco products, the actual individual employed by the owner of the store is cited on the spot, are they not?
Yes, they are.
So, that, I mean, that...
Not a surprise.
Right, right. So, there's, there's, there is...
A citation.
An immediate...
A citation.
Yeah, right.
A citation says on, on the face of the document, "This is not an admission of guilt." A citation is based on probable cause.
I understand that, but that, that is going to be the first notice for the owner, I would, I'd suspect, that, that something happened, right? I, I agree with you. There's, there is...
I'm with you there.
Everyone presumed innocent until proven guilty.
Absolutely, right. So, I, I'm with you there. The, the licensee might find out from their employee based on, you know, lots of different variables. You know, for a client like CVS or 7-Eleven who have corporate headquarters in Rhode Island or Connecticut, it certainly is trickier to rely solely on whether the employee is going to be completely forthright with, with their employer. But that's really another issue. So, the, and I had an opportunity to, to cross-examine the tax and license collector at the administrative hearing that we had in this matter. And he testified that the suspensions, the notices of suspensions are issued based on, on just the citation alone. So, before there's been an adjudication of guilt in the criminal courts, there's a finding made by a non-attorney that of law has been violated without any oppor- issued based on, on just the citation alone. So before there's been an adjudication of guilt in the criminal courts, there's a finding made by a non-attorney that of law has been violated without any opportunity for the licensee to be heard, and a suspension is imposed just based on that alone. And, and I think that, that really, I mean, you know, and we don't, none of us had to go to law school to know that the American legal system is based on the concept of innocent before proven guilty. But here, the county's ordinance allows a citation alone to be conclusive evidence of guilt. And the citation was written, I mean, the suspension was levied prior to the adjudication of the citation. But then at the hearing, and the ordinance provides that the county has the burden of proof, but then at the hearing, county counsel produces the, a guilty plea from the clerk of the Penal Code Section 308 violation, and basically says, "That's it. That's my entire burden of proof. Everything, you know, has been established." But how, how can that be if the suspension was, was decided on before the Penal Code 308 adjudication? And furthermore, at that Penal Code 308 adjudication, the licensee, who is now being disciplined, wasn't there, had no opportunity to be heard, had no notices, and certainly the clerk had, you know, no guidance as to what, how, how that guilty plea might be used in the future. There's just so many moving pieces, and none of them fit together to adequately give the licensee notice or an opportunity to be heard, or really just a comprehensive procedure regarding this substantial, substantial government entitlement, which is their tobacco retailer license. Now, earlier in today's meeting, this board voted to amend the tobacco retailer ordinance. And when I reviewed those documents, it says there that it's, that it's clarifying that the tobacco retailer ordinance is independent of Penal Code 308 adjudication. If that's a clarification of how the ordinance was always intended to be read, now going forward and also in the past, then, then I find it cause for reversal that at the actual hearing, at which the county had the burden of proof, the only thing that was said again and again is, "There was a guilty plea." I mean, either we have a violation that's independent of the 308 adjudication, or you have a suspension that's based on the 308 adjudication. And as a licensee, if we don't know the role that the criminal adjudication plays, which I don't, I still don't, then how, how can we be said to have an actual meaningful opportunity to prepare a defense and to prepare a case? I mean, it's just, for me, it's just been over at every step, just complete surprise.
Melissa, I just, just have a heavy pause, just for a moment. I want to, Robin, I want to ask about that point. If, again, she reading from the staff report, and if we say that it's independent of, and yet we use that as the sole burden of proof, as again, as Melissa's outlined, then not being a lawyer on this board, that says to me that there certainly is connection by virtue of what, what, you know, what transpired there. So do you have any, again, I know I can call Diana, but she's the attorney on the case. I guess I'm curious from your view as county counsel, who obviously with the changes that we looked at, again, you know, these are, are retroactive, but I think certainly pointing out the point she made. So I'd be interested to hear from your standpoint, or your good legal mind, as to what your take on that is.
I would just go back to the, to the findings that the board made when enacting the original ordinance, and then any amendments related to that, that this is a license conditioned upon not acting in violation of the ordinance, the sale of mine, of tobacco products to minors. So the act doesn't, this is more like a speeding ticket. The officer called in on a speeding ticket, saw the act in his presence, and that's what the citation says. This was done in the presence of the sheriff officers, filling out the citation upon which the condition of the license is predicated. Period.
But, but then we issued the suspension almost immediately once that is, and I still, again, I don't know how you separate those two, because whether it's an employee or the owner, or, you know, some corporate representative that sells tobacco product, I mean, I don't get that that's being contested here, that that, you know, that basically that's a, that's been proven in court, and, you know, and again, the person admitted to it, and, and it occurred, and we have sheriff's office. But I, but still...
So that act occurs, and then the due process, process for that taking place is, is conditioned upon the, the presentation before the hearing officer to decide whether in fact those facts are true?
What's been going through my head here a little bit, though, just, and so in the event that the case went to court on the, in this case, the employee who pled guilty and, you know, received a, you know, a sentence commensurate with, you know, the action that was taken there that she was convicted of, or admitted to, then what if the matter, and I don't want to get into hypotheticals, but went to court and, and the, either the, you know, judge threw it out, or didn't make a finding of guilty, or the person didn't plead guilty, and, you know, had a trial, and it was determined. So how does that affect the process that we're currently in the midst of? So if that's the burden of proof that was used, certainly in this case, and it's factual, but in the event that that didn't occur, I mean, it's maybe simultaneous or not, but so then what happens? So what if, you know, in the court of law, that person is not convicted? And even though we have, you know, evidence that shows that this was sold to a minor, but whatever their technicality was, might be, does that then reverse this process, or does that stop this process related to suspension?
Now, it's a matter of, there are multiple pieces of evidence that prove the same fact. Then we would have personal witnesses testify to what they saw in the, in the action with the clerk.
Both the sheriff's officer, the decoy?
Right.
Okay, so that, so that would be the process that we would use?
Or the tape, or whatever other evidence there is. This is an admission of, of the same piece of evidence that could be proven in other manners.
Okay, Mr. Cerner.
Thank you. So follow-up question for Robin. In an instance like this, where there's a, it's not clearly a decoy operation for the underage purchase of tobacco products, is there a point, once law enforcement makes themselves known in the course of this action to the person that's been identified selling the product, is there a point in that whole process, as the operation goes down, where someone immediately, the accused, someone has the ability to say, "I'm not signing anything. I'm not admitting guilt. I'm not," is there, is there that opportunity?
Yeah, I'd have to have Diana explain the process, but I...
When was, when was the admission of guilt made by the individual in this case?
That would have been following the court procedure, right.
And so no, signing a citation is not admission of guilt, just like, that's not necessarily admission of guilt for traffic citation?
Correct, correct.
You can go fight it in court, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Melissa, proceed.
Sure. I'm with you. It's, it's confusing. It's, it's extremely confusing. I think what the county is saying is they want to have it both ways. If the, the citation goes badly in court, they don't want to be tied to that conclusion. And if the citation goes well in court, and by that, by going well, I mean, if there's a guilty plea, then the county wants to be able to use that and that in and of itself to prove each and every element of, of the Penal Code 308 violation, which how, which the county has to prove and has the burden to prove, based on how the ordinance is drafted. And, and that's problematic to me, because obviously the guilty plea wasn't relied on when the, the suspension was issued and decided. I, I certainly believe that the administrative hearing should be based on the evidence that the county had at the time that they decided to impose that discipline. I mean, it makes it very easy if, if six months later, you can also look at all the evidence you've collected since you made your decision to, to support it. But another big issue that I, I kept running into again and again with the ordinance is, is the lack of specificity as to how the hearing is actually going to be proceeded, or how the hearing will be proceed. The ordinance doesn't specify how discovery will be conducted, if there's any discovery enforcements. It doesn't provide for whether there's going to be cross-examination. It says that the formal rules of evidence don't apply, but that's, that's a far cry from, from actually showing what rules of evidence do apply, or do any rules of evidence apply? Is hearsay evidence applicable? There's, and something, one thing that I really had an issue with is that there is not a single mention in the ordinance of decoys at all. Not that decoys will be used, not who is going to conduct decoy operations, if there are any decoy guidelines, if there are any defenses available to, to a decoy operation. So when, when I first started, I called county counsel and I said, you know, "Where is this? Where is this authorization? Where, like, where can I find information about the Sacramento County's decoy program? And, you know, what, how it's conducted, and why it's conducted, and what, what applies?" And she basically told, had nothing to say. There is none. There is nothing online. There is nothing in the code. You know, and after our conversation, she sent me a, a code section from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Act, which doesn't apply here, and only the Department of ABC has jurisdiction to apply that. And, and I don't, I mean, that's, it's confusing to, to a licensee. It's confusing to a county employee who's, you know, trying to defend the ordinance. It's just, it's so confusing.
Melissa, just pause, you have a question, Mr. Cerner.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
So I want to ask a question of county counsel on that point. Is there anything in law that requires us to denote the use of decoys or any other specific measures, means to catch people in the act?
This is not ordinance-specific. It's law enforcement practice.
That's right. That's why I'm asking the question. So it's analogous to, there would be nothing necessarily required of us to acknowledge in terms of the authority of, I guess in our case, the CHP, because they enforce traffic in the incorporated county, to, you know, hide behind the bushes waiting for a speeder?
Or prostitution, or recycling, or any of the other ordinances for...
Okay.
Thank you. On that note, something that was really confusing to me is generally when decoys are used, there's a provision in an ordinance or in a statute that provides for decoy immunity.
I'm, just so you're, you're clear in terms of my thinking, I'm trying to decipher, you keep on saying what's confusing to you. I'm trying to decipher what's confusing to you versus what's confusing to the law. To me, that's what's at issue.
Sure. And, and I don't mean to...
And the law is that you're not allowed to sell...
Right.
Tobacco products to someone that age. I mean, that's pretty easy to understand, whether it's by decoy, or a sheriff's deputy, or an employee of the county in some other way. I don't, I mean, I've never heard an attorney stand in front of us and say, "I'm confused."
I am not confused about Penal Code Section 308. I am perfectly clear on, on what it says. It's a criminal, it's a penal statute. It was enforced in law. There was a whole proceeding. What's confusing is how, what, how that citation and how that plea are being used by the county to discipline a license pursuant to the county's ordinance. It's not confused, the tobacco laws themselves are not confusing. It's the county's procedure that's, that's not, it's not written, it's not provided for, and it's, it doesn't say. I mean, the county's ordinance says the APA, the Administrative Procedure Act, doesn't apply, but it doesn't say what, what does apply. It doesn't say what rules there are. It doesn't say what the licensee is entitled to in terms of notice, in terms of an opportunity to be heard, in terms of evidence, in terms of cross-examination. And when, when there is such a great government infringement, such as a mandatory 30-day suspension, which is much harsher than anything from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, a licensee has to be able to know what, what they can prove, what they can say, what they can do before this infringement can take place. That's, that's where I'm confused, not about the content of the tobacco law. And I want to make that really clear, because I think that that would seem like a very unpersuasive argument. But that being said, there, the Penal Code Section 308, the version of that statute that was in effect at the time of the violation in the matter that we're dealing with today, it provided in Section E that a minor who is, who is used as an enforcement activity, so like a decoy, is immune from, from the violation only if the operation adhered to the State Act guidelines. So the State Act in Business and Professions Code, Section 22952, has all these guidelines about decoy operations, how the licensee has to be noted, noticed, what the decoy can look like, what, what has to be documented by the, the enforcement agency. And, and here, so that, that applies here. If it doesn't apply, that means that the sheriff's county, the sheriff used a decoy and broke the law, because the decoy isn't immune from, from violating that law unless the State Act guidelines are followed. And, and that's, that in and of itself is confusing. I argue that the State Act guidelines applied and that they weren't satisfied. County counsel at the lower hearing argued that they don't apply, and they didn't need to be satisfied at all. And the hearing officer kind of went King David on us and said, "Well, they were sufficiently complied with." And it's, it's, no one can, has enough information based on the county's ordinance to make a clear determination either way of what standards apply here and what standards don't apply here.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, yes, but I think I, I'm good leaving it at that. I'd also just like to incorporate by reference, I had a few additional arguments in my appeal document that, that I submitted to the board some time ago now. So I'd like to incorporate those arguments here as if fully stated.
Melissa, so your request is, in essence?
Oh, yeah, reversal. I think...
That's what I'm making sure I make clear, because you said earlier, I was making sure that's, as you conclude, that's what you're asking for reversal.
Yeah, and if I could just say one more sentence about that. The fact that the county submitted, you know, asked to amend the ordinance, saying to this board that the ordinance as it was written is confusing, that the ordinance as it was written is giving us unforeseen results, I, I don't really see how, how, you know, we can at the same time take this inconsistent position to say, "No, it was perfectly clear." But, you know, before this appeal was even heard, it was also amended out of those, those confusion issues.
And again, you know, recognize what you said, but clearly on page three of the report that was attached to the ordinance minutes we had today said, "This reference to other sections of the county code has created confusion on the certain sections you were referencing, and has resulted in situations where changes to the reference code sections have had unforeseen impacts on tobacco retailer process." So again, I would, you know, whether I agree with your argument or not, that clearly was in the report to, to what you said, so, okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. All right.
Mr. Cully?
Yes, Mr. Cerner, yeah. And then Ms. Frost.
So just one last question. Thank you for making it concise and clear of what you're asking for. That's always important, I think, when you're in front of anybody that's making an argument. Do you refute at all the fact that the law was broken that an agent of your client that was in the employment of your client sold, illegally sold tobacco products? Yes or no?
I didn't represent the clerk. I have no idea what happened at the clerk's...
Yes or no?
You've seen the admission of guilt, right? You've, you've reviewed that, I assume.
What do you mean by the admission of guilt?
You understand that?
The clerk, the clerk that was convicted.
I saw a not certified, printed-out copy of something from the Sacramento court that indicated there was a guilty plea. I mean, in no court of law would that ever be accepted.
It's not what I'm asking. I, I mean, I guess it's like the...
Yes, yes. There was a sale. There was a sale made to a minor.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
The question I have relates to the burden of proof of innocence, and you seem to be arguing something completely different. You're arguing, arguing the ordinance, but not innocence or guilt. The burden of proof is in relation to, to whether or not they sold the tobacco product. Is that correct? That's my understanding.
For the hearing officer's decision, yes. The, what's before the board is whether or not to uphold the hearing officer's decision of the 30-day suspension.
And Diana will be up next, maybe can explain some of that.
Okay, but I guess my, I guess my, my confusion is your, your argument is in relation to the ordinance and not the actual act of selling tobacco products. And you even just now admitted, "He did sell tobacco products."
The clerk. It was a woman. Yes, yes. But the, there's two issues. There's one... There's one, whether the crime was committed, and so when that clerk went to criminal court, there was a, you know, a bevy of procedures that are available. They're entitled to counsel, they're entitled to cross-examination, the formal rules of evidence apply. When we're here before the county adjudicating basically the same things, what rules apply then? Because the, the licensee is actually arguably suffering a much greater infringement than, you know, the clerk got, I don't know, community service. The licensee's going to lose their livelihood, you know, a main weight that they make money for a month automatically. That's a really big infringement of property. And, and going into it, there's just nothing in the ordinance to, to show, to show licensee or licensee's counsel what procedures the county is going to use, what safeguards there are to make sure that, that, that determination isn't going to be just off the cuff, that it isn't just going to be based on insufficient evidence. So that, that's really what my argument is.
Okay, and I guess my assumption was that the same rules would apply here. But, thank you.
They did not.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Standby, maybe other questions, I don't know that there will be, but thank you very much. Okay, Diana?
Thank you. Good afternoon. So, first of, first, sorry. The, the notice of suspension was originally issued on May 3rd. The, the operation happened on April 10th of last year. The notice of suspension was issued on May 3rd. And within the notice of suspension were provided to the licensee, not to the clerk, to the licensee, appeal rights. You have a right to appeal this, you have a right to have a hearing, you have a right to present evidence, cross-examine witnesses, all of that, okay? And so those due process rights were told to the licensee on May 3rd, okay? They, they were supposed to appeal within 15 days, they didn't appeal initially until June 30th, and, and the appeal was initially denied for that reason, but then because there was, in a subsequent letter, June 22nd, about, okay, the suspension's going into effect, there was an error in citation, the tax and license collector decided, tax collect, the finance department, the county, decided to accept the appeal, even though it was late, even though the appeal fee had not been paid. So that was additional due process protection that perhaps was not required. The appellant's attorney, Ms. Galbart, submitted at least three different discovery requests, requiring considerable effort and time to comply with, even though there's nothing that says anything about formal discovery. So, but that was, there was no argument about that, you don't have a right to do that, anything. That was complied with, that took some time. As a consequence, the hearing that was originally scheduled in September got postponed to November. And in the process of complying with the discovery request, I discovered that there was a defect in the original notice of suspension, so there was an amended notice of suspension filed and, I mean, served in late October, October 28th. And along with that was given the opportunity that if, if you need additional time to respond to this amended notice, you may do that, and we can postpone the hearing. The appellant's attorney again requested a continuance to January 24th because of that, supposedly because of that amended notice, but didn't file any additional response to the, to the notice. So that was an additional due process protection that was provided. And then the hearing was held on Jan, I think it was January 24th, 2017, and once the decision was issued, the appellant was informed of the right to review before the Board of Supervisors and did make a timely request for that. That hearing was originally scheduled before the board on March 21st. Ms. Galbart wasn't available on March 21st, and without objection, the hearing was then continued to today. So there was a great deal of due process protection for the appellant in the, in the process. With regard to the ordinance that was in effect when, when the, the original notice was, was, notice of suspension was issued, it does, it, it isn't clear, and that's why it was amended. It isn't clear from the language that what is required by the ordinance, and I think this is what was always required, is how other tobacco license cases have been handled because they don't all include a criminal conviction by any stretch of the imagination. Mostly, they don't. It's the acts that constitute a violation of Penal Code 308 that is in fact a violation of the ordinance, and the ordinance is now very, very clear on that. And I will grant you, Ms. Galbart's argument on that point did prompt that clarification of the ordinance, but I believe that was always the board's intent, that it was the acts, that we're not trying to, in a license violation, a business license violation administrative hearing, adhere to the criminal burden of proof beyond a reasonable doubt to prove, to prove the violation. What we're talking about are the actions, and that would be the sale of tobacco to a minor, or of someone under the age of 18 in this instance, to prove the violation of the state tobacco law that then proves the violation of the county code. And that's what was proven. It was proven in this case both by the acts that occurred and sheriff department personnel testified about it at the hearing, so even without the conviction, we could have proved the case in the, in this instance. But quite frankly, when the clerk pleads guilty to the 308 violation, that in fact is conclusive proof that those, that those, that's legal proof that those acts occurred that, and that's why I repeated it several times, it's incontrovertible. And the, all this argument about whether the decoy had to adhere to the State Act standards or whatever, I asserted that the State Act didn't apply those standards, those guidelines didn't apply in this case. The hearing officer, despite this disparaging comment by, by opposing counsel, the hearing officer carefully considered all the evidence and, and agreed with the county's position that the State Act did not apply, and in any event that, even if they did apply, that they, that they were complied with. So, so there was due process, the State Act didn't apply, there's conclusive proof that a violation occurred. The ordinance is very clear that if a violation of 308, Penal Code 308 occurs, Sacramento County Code 407-110A1, I think, says that on a first offense within a three-year period, that a 30-day mandatory suspension shall be imposed. And that's, and that's where we stand. This issue of whether or not the licensee could have done anything, didn't know about the citation, whatever, presumably the licensee did know what was going on at their business. I mean, certainly they knew by May 3rd what had happened, and that their clerk had been cited for this offense, and the clerk didn't plead guilty until May 25th. And so if the licensee, the company, Colonial Energy, wanted to assist the clerk in the criminal case, provide them with an attorney, advise them to plead not guilty, you know, whatever they wanted, they could have participated, they could have assisted in that matter. I don't know whether they did or not, and honestly, because we could have proven it even without the conviction, but it's conclusively proven with the conviction, I think the evidence is very clear, and I don't think there's an issue of due process. This whole thing about the rule, the rules of evidence and the APA don't apply in, in an administrative action. I've been doing administrative law for at least 15 years, and this, this is commonplace, okay? That, that reasonable, evidence that a reasonable person would consider is the usual standard in an administrative hearing, that strict rules of evidence don't apply, hearsay is admissible. And, and the hearing officer has the opportunity to give weight to the evidence, you know, rather than simply reject it out of hand. And in this case, I think the hearing officer did carefully consider in the evidence, and the hearing officer's decision is supported by the evidence, and the county is asking the board to uphold that decision.
Okay, thanks, Diana. Robin, before we get into board deliberations, then, under the structure for this, does the appellant get one last closing comment, or we've heard from both sides and that's sufficient then?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Diana. Any other questions of either counsel for the appellant or counsel for a county? All right. If not, then I'll bring it back to this board then for discussion and decision.
I would move that we adopt the staff recommendation that the findings and orders of the hearing officer be adopted as, as those of the Board of Supervisors, and that the order of suspension be upheld.
Second.
And that suspension would be effective when?
Would you like to address that? Not you. You, Laura.
Good afternoon. Guy Fussin, Department of Finance. The, the suspension will be effective probably 15 days after the board ruling is, is finalized. We'll send a letter to the company and let them know the start dates.
So is, is there judicial due process beyond this? So this, the decision, this board is final determination, not appealable to court?
Well, certainly it can go beyond, but this is the final...
Yeah, I mean, so there's that time period, that 15 days, and that's why I wanted to know, so they have the opportunities, they choose to.
And, and I don't have an answer to that. I think probably the appellant could file a, a petition for writ, and so we will take that into consideration and make sure that they have sufficient time to file a, a writ petition.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Okay, thanks, Guy. Okay, nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Thanks, Melissa, for being with us. Thank you, Diana, Guy. Okay. All right, that takes us through the morning's order of business. Ma'am clerk?
This concludes our morning business, yes.
All right. And I understand we have a change for this afternoon, that, Mr. County Executive?
Yes, we do. We are going to be requesting the 2 o'clock items zoning code cleanup to be dropped from the agenda for us to bring it back. There are a couple of legal issues we need to work with county council's office.
Okay.
So that means our next item, hearing item, is at 2:15.
Okay, I just note that, I know there may be a party that will come down here for 2 o'clock, I don't know if we've been able to reach that person, so the amount they do, we can maybe be able to offer some comments from this board, because I wanted to weigh in, it wasn't on the specific zoning code, but there's some awareness, I think, by some board members that I have a, a business proprietor that would like to, like for to consider something, and it was relevant to some of the code amendments that we were looking at, so. Anyway, so we won't go back in here till 2:15, we have a closed session then?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we will recess in the closed session and then reconvene back in these chambers at 2:15.[1717.08]